All right, I've got it on.
All right. I'd like to call to order the Bills Council work session meeting July 25, 2019. I show that all council members are present except for Robert Epps this time. I need to, first off, we have the adoption of agenda, do we have any additions, subtractions, or moving things, or any suggestions, recommendations?
I just asked, we took a couple of seconds because I, um, I've had some family stuff going on, I haven't reviewed it since the last time it went out, so I'm just gonna double check it. I don't know if anyone else has anything, but just thought I'd probably let you know.
I think Christina said that we're gonna take presentations off because they're not coming today.
Correct.
And the only thing that's changed also is the bonds were taken off too. But that, they were taken off before the agenda went out.
Okay, so that's not what was...
Yeah, you had it on your draft when the draft came out, but on this one, they, it wasn't there because we, we knew they weren't gonna be ready then.
Did AMT have a scheduling conflict, I guess?
No, they, um, in, in effort to try to save some money, they're gonna try to come out and do more of the assessment when the roads are being done, so we're just trying to...
So they're...
Okay, I don't see, I, I think I'm fine. Uh, there's nothing on here that I would change.
Do we want to continue to have council comments on there? Because we normally don't have those on work session, but I'll leave it up to...
Well, since you didn't have your record meeting, I just added some things in case you all wanted to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
And plus, you know, you have to have a public comment period once a month, and since you didn't meet at your record meeting, then I had to put that on as well.
Yeah, you know what, and I don't know where it comes, but I wanna give that CRTPO update, so I think we should leave it there.
Okay.
It's a good place to give updates, like ones like that, I think.
Yep.
We haven't had one in a while.
Well, we can also change it and, and say council con, um, updates on the work session if you want to, if, if you had something that you wanted to report.
I think council comments is fine.
We do have a CRTPO update on here.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, do we, we took the presentations off already?
Mm-hmm.
So all good?
Yep.
The motion to approve the amended as agenda?
Salute.
Agenda, agenda as amended, I think, way too long, sorry guys.
Salute.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. First off, we have, uh, public hearings, hold a pub...
We have none.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment period, uh, has anyone...
No, we have none.
Sign up, just sign up, okay? Next up, we have then, we move forward to the public hearings. First thing on the agenda now is a hold a public hearing to consider temporary use permit TUP number 12269 from Marvin Ridge High School Football and Cheer Barbecue Event in Margaret Eaton Park, 8909 New Town Road, on August 17, 2019. Need a motion to...
Open up a public hearing?
Open public hearing.
Okay, saluted.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. No one has signed up?
No one.
Okay, no one is here for that, need a motion to close?
Salute.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have now is discussion consideration as TUP number 12269 for Marvin Ridge High School Football and Cheer Barbecue Event. This is, you have this, Christina, is that...
Uh, everything's pretty much in the agenda packet. I'm gonna know more about it because what else do we have? I'll pull it up.
Looks like it's the barbecue.
And the fundraiser talk there, right?
I think they're doing it before the, before school starts back, for the...
Yeah, for the first...
For uniforms or something like that is usually what they do.
It's not really a fundraiser.
I think it's just to jumpstart their season.
Okay. Any concerns from the council?
No, probably need to get the findings back.
And they will be finishing up at what time? So is the timing of the event, 6:30, they don't have a closing time?
Uh, there wasn't a, a closing time, was there on the permit, Christina? I didn't notice.
6:30.
The only reason I ask is because the, the, it does close at a certain time, and how is that gonna be, how much time are you gonna give them, and, um, which we usually allow events to go to around 10 or 11 if that's the case and stuff, but we gotta have some...
The permit doesn't indicate an, a stopping time, however, we can find out from Derek.
Or maybe put...
But, but the park closes at 8 o'clock.
So we can make it...
That's an hour and a half, which we may wanna extend that now and make sure...
Make it from 6 to 9 or something like that.
I'm just gonna say something on that note, because you know me, I think we need to be careful that we're fair with the same people, right? Say we're fair with policies. I, I'm not opposed in general to what we're saying, but, um, I wanna be sure that we're not changing rules for other, for certain people and not others, because that can travel quick. Um, so, yeah, there isn't, there's no closing time, I'm looking again real quick.
So should we have it like National Night Out closing time, like 11?
Yeah, like I was gonna say, what's the precedent?
I think we should put a hard stop on it for, you know, because at some point, you just can't let it...
No, I agree, but like National Night Out's time is 6 to, 6 to 11, so if that was 11, then we should have all of them stopped at 11.
And just to maybe state it...
They can stop earlier with a later date.
Yes, but no later than 11.
And, and to that point, I think we, our park rules set like a maximum date, double, I'll just say double check those two as a note, as a side note, but yeah, as long as we have a precedent that we set, whatever that precedent is that we...
I mean, I feel like what would, what was, um...
We typically have, well, we, it's 10 o'clock, 10:30, something like that.
Yeah.
But we typically have, have a, a stop time. I, I don't know if they just forgot to add one, um, or were supposed to get back with Derek on, on the ending time, and it just never got to the permit, I, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, I would say because National Night Out says 11, then we should tell them that they have to be done by 11. If they can be done before then, that's no problem.
I'm sure that will be...
What do you guys think?
We can set that program.
Even Christmas tree lighting sometimes goes like, just take a general inventory of what we got and our maximum.
There's, there's nothing on the, on the bond rental as far as how long they rent the bond for, or what's...
It's usually four hours. They, they rent it four hours, and then they have to pay an additional for every hour that they rent it.
So then it's...
So I don't know what's been arranged with this group.
Who's, is the organization, who's the, I know it says Marvin Ridge Football Cheer, but who's the actual, like, organization or department renting Kelly Blackmer?
Okay, so that's an individual.
That's an individual.
Okay, well, it's not, it's not necessarily sanctioned by the high school, is that correct?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about too.
So I'm wondering if it's the, um, the booster club, maybe she's with the booster club? I don't know.
I would make assumptions, I think we should find out, and here's why I say that. I mean, we've had young people have parties there before, but there should be somebody responsible for manning the exit time, you know, we, for example, we often have at our events, even though they might go late, we've got, um, uh, we hire the off-duty police officer, right? So everyone's kinda ushered out at the same time. Do we know if that's the case here?
I don't know, but I'll, I'll be happy to reach out to her and, and then send an email out to everyone and you all can, um...
I mean, we do have somebody there to make sure everybody gets out and sort nothing.
As far as I know, Derek is supposed to be there, um, but I, like, like we say, we, we don't know very much about this then.
I'm saying this is, you know, varsity and junior varsity, and the high school football players, cheerleaders.
I'm sure there's gonna be adults there.
And, and you, you know, like, we just, we just can't assume any of this stuff, so we, number one, I would say you have a motion there and make sure, or an agreement or approve this upon Derek or someone of authority making sure that the park is, that the, the event has closed down, that they've cleaned up, and done all that, by the time. Also, I don't mean to be a downer on this stuff, but, you know, because it's not sanctioned by the, necessarily, in my opinion, based on looking at, it's not sanctioned by the high school, which means could lend itself to maybe alcohol and stuff, and I think that's not allowed in, in, in...
But they have to have a permit if they want to...
No, be allowed alcohol in the park.
Yeah, but, but, but they're not of age. Those are kids, those are kids.
Well, the parents are, though, if there are parents there, so...
Yeah, but they have to have a permit, and there's no, no permit issued for, for alcohol.
So...
But see, that's all an oversight issue, and that's why I say that we generally, for major, how many are they expecting, is that in here?
A hundred.
A hundred, at least, at least a hundred.
Okay. And it looks like they're gonna start the party at 6:30, but some people will be getting there in the early morning to start cooking, is what this email says.
And I just, let me just make one comment, the only, the only hesitancy I have of making the precedent where we're setting after hours for public, for private events is, you know, how are we gonna change it for the next person that comes along this month? Because then, then we're gonna require Derek to go back after hours to, to close.
I wouldn't, and I, and, and with all due respect to the suggestion, and I know you were just throwing ideas out there, I don't think, I wouldn't be in favor of a motion that was conditional upon our staff checking. I think that for an event this large, and I'm sorry, this is an area I don't remember off the top of my head, it almost feels like we should, they should, it should be mandatory to have their own off-duty officer there to be sure that things are calm and safe and, do you know what I'm saying? I, I don't know if we do have it, we might, I just don't remember.
Well, it should, it probably should be, it probably should be something that we require and that we charge them for, we provide it, make sure that we...
Or, yeah.
Provide it, and we just build it into their price, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
How would you feel kind of a...
You have to, you have to pay for it, the, the office of the meeting.
Who, who, who took this? Who, who knows about this?
Derek's the only one that I, I would know.
I was looking for the signature and I couldn't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Derek's been handling a lot of this park stuff, so I don't know. And road hit was...
All right, well, can we put a pin in this one and call Derek and have him...
Yes.
Call us or come in and talk, I mean, we're gonna be here for, I'm sure, a couple hours, can we just put a pin in this one? I'd like more information for...
One thing too, also just to note, which we can revise when we do our special events, if you wanted to make a contingent upon law enforcement, you could just note that in your, um, that it's gonna endanger public health.
I mean, I feel like if it's gonna be this many people, I mean, we, obviously, for our events, we have them there because they're, you know, that's us and we're doing that, but for large events like this, or any large event, I, I don't, I mean, I think that are safe and sorry.
And I'm trying to think back to other large events, just to be sure, like, I'm thinking there was an egg hunt once where they had like a hundred some odd people, but it was in the morning on a Sunday, you know? Um, I, I don't know, if we don't have a requirement for security, we probably should think about that.
All right, let's, let's see Derek, I mean, what do you guys think? Put a pin in it and see if Derek can offer up some additional information?
Can we vote till later to see if he can come in and talk to us?
I mean, I just, yeah, like, I kinda, I kinda feel like, without, without being, you know, uh, thing, but, you know, there's a difference between an egg hunt in the morning and a varsity football barbecue.
But if we, but if we require it for, but if we're requiring it for a group of X size, we're gonna have to require it across the board.
Yeah, it's gotta be for everything, but yeah.
So do you wanna postpone the discussion and see if you can, and move on and see if Derek can go back to you before the meeting ends?
Yeah.
And the only consideration to prolong it is, and I, I think, um, Kim tried to answer, but I, I interrupted when I asked, was the, is there a date they need to have this by?
The event is on the 17th of August, so this is the only meeting.
17th of August?
Well, no, 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 no. Correct.
So we have one more meeting scheduled. We have one more meeting before that? I just wanna be sure, do we just write some exhaustive motion, or can we get...
I texted both of them, so I should have some answers if y'all wanna move on to...
I would.
Okay, let's put, yeah, let's... So I'm gonna make that, and then we table...
Table it until we hear, and then we may have to table it to the next meeting.
Yeah, so table until further notice?
Yeah.
With their consent.
And at the very least, yeah, it could be, and at the very least...
No, but rugged.
I'll just amend my motion, um, until further notice, but to be no later than our next scheduled council meeting.
Okay.
I just wanna put this aside.
So that's...
There's application, all right. So we have a motion to table it, all of you there?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, that stuff we have, uh, hold a public hearing to consider temporary use permit TUP number 19 dash 12275, National Night Out Event at Margaret Eaton Park, at Margaret Eaton Park, 8909 New Town Road, on August 6, 2019. Need a motion to open up a public hearing.
Salute.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Looks like no one has signed up to, uh...
No, no public.
Talk about that, need a motion to close?
Salute.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, unanimous dissent. The next up, we have discussion consideration TUP number 19 dash 12275, National Night Out Event and Adopt Proclamation 2019 dash 07 dash 01.
So speaking of, do we have, um, off-duty police officers? I mean, they're all over the cart about that.
We have, we have Stephen that's gonna be there, or Deputy Eason, and he's gonna be off, he's not off-duty, but he is gonna be slated for the event, another car's gonna take him.
Okay. I'm sure that would be a rough day to start anything.
He's actually taking over...
The tanks are pretty big.
He's taken over this project really well, uh, we kinda fed him to the wolves with it, and he's done well. We're gonna have actually live CPR, um, not actually live people, but CPR training.
Oh, that's, we're not gonna...
That's cool.
Yeah, we're gonna have an ambulance there this year as well.
Oh, which?
An ambulance, EMTs.
Just in case, or for displaying?
No, we've actually, Derek and Eason and I have gone through and started doing incident action plans for events.
Uh-huh.
Um, so we are trying to have more crowd control of our events, in the event something happens, um, we'll, we'll be prepared and have, have our emergency technicians there.
So it is for like precautionary measures?
Oh.
Not like, not for us to look at?
And they're gonna be showing you as well too, so...
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
They'll have, they'll probably have...
Kids love what they do in internal...
Oh, yeah. It's your favorite part, yeah.
You're like, get in the jail cell there, a little while.
You know, dry run.
Practice a little bit. All right, anybody got any problems with this?
No, uh, I don't.
We need to go through the determinations.
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to accept all findings of fact, including that the proposed temporary use will not materially endanger the public health, welfare, and safety, the proposed temporary use will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining properties, the proposed temporary use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and preserves its spirit.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously.
And then I'll go ahead and make the second part if it's okay with you guys. That having found, um, all findings of fact to be true, that we approve temporary use permit to allow National Night Out to be held on Margaret, at Margaret Eaton Park on August 6, 2019, from 6 to 11:00 p.m.
And can you also, um, add the adoption of the proclamation?
And adopt the proclamation. Oh, 2019 dash 07 dash 01, thank you.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Pass it some real quick. No, never mind, keep going.
You sure?
Yeah, keep going.
Oh, on that, on National Night Out?
Nope, 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 keep going, we're fine, we're gonna come back to it.
Um, do y'all, they just texted me back, y'all wanna go back to...
Perfect, 'cause that was my question.
Okay, so we're gonna move it on to the table again? If that's okay with you.
Yeah, if you have answers.
All right, so move temporary use permit, fill in the blank, to occur presently, and then you have to have to open the board again.
All right. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll open the floor back up on the, uh, what we just tabled, temporary use permit number 12269 for Marvin Ridge High School Cheer and Cheer Barbecue Event.
Okay, so, hold on, but on the determination thing, they put no on each one of them. Did you guys notice that?
They're, they're not supposed to. I did, and I didn't quite sure, but I thought maybe I don't understand what that means.
But it's not...
Well, not material, yeah, see, they're trying to say, no, it won't endanger the public health, but they're not supposed to do that stuff.
Right, okay, well, that's what, I was like, wait a minute.
Which, by the way, is why I was looking for staff signature.
Right, that's why...
And I was like, is that Kelly? That doesn't look like Kelly, because I saw the K.
That's what I was thinking too, because that's why, because when I went back, because when I saw this one, I was like, wait a minute, and that's why I went back, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, okay, see.
All right, Christina, what you got?
Um, the scheduled event is supposed to be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., according to the calendar that Derek says. I don't know if that's...
Maybe they start cooking early, I think they're doing a pig roast, and that's what they're doing.
In, in-ground pig roast, or a...
No, it'll probably be like a big...
It's just a, probably a...
A mobile pit.
Yeah, that's usually what they have.
Okay, so 8 to 8?
8 to 8?
So it's really...
So it's really an hour and a half that the people are gonna be there, because it says the guest arriving at 6:30.
Yeah, so it's really the people prepping and doing all the stuff, getting ready for them to be there early in the morning, that's more for cooking, I think.
Okay, so to 8:00 a.m., right?
To 8:00 p.m.
To 8:00 p.m., what else did they tell you?
There's no, there's no law enforcement scheduled, but maybe we can impose that on them.
Okay. I don't know what we do there. Okay. Well, you can insist that law enforcement be there for the time stamp.
But have we done that before?
I don't know.
No, but if you have a feeling, if you have a reason to believe that, you know, there's gonna be public health, welfare, and safety to be endangered, then you can impose that.
You can impose, but I still, let me ask this, I don't know, how, how many weddings have we had in the last while? Have you had many?
I was gonna say, don't we have to approve those too?
Yes.
I don't feel like we've approved, I don't feel like I've approved any...
We haven't had any recently, I know that back, when, uh, we used to, do we ever require it then? Feel like we should check.
No. Most of the events that I have seen, if it's a private event, you, you usually don't require law enforcement, but when you have public events like this...
Have like the public one, like people coming in and out.
Well, this is, yeah, because this is, they're saying a hundred, could be 200 could show up, I mean, you know, how many kids decide you're gonna come? Or, you know, whether they come from Charlotte High School, you know?
That's right, they hear it's going on.
Yeah, they hear it's going on. You know, you could have, uh...
It would probably be worthy to have, I mean, you've got...
And then if we do it for one, we're gonna have to start doing it for everybody, we can't just pick and choose.
Well, I guess we could.
And if we're...
The temporary use permit, I guess we sorta can.
Yeah, you can, because...
But, only based on the information, I guess, I don't know, I, I don't know, I, I don't know, not sure.
Especially if this is gonna be, um, students there to...
Yeah, definitely have your parents.
And parents should be there. And we do allow, um, one hour after closing time for events, that's what we normally would allow, so if y'all wanted to make the motion from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., that's within our normal protocol.
No, 8:00 a.m. is not, upon.
Yeah.
They're just gonna be there.
That's just the entire park.
I'm gonna throw this out there, I, I would, in this particular case, I would prefer you speak to the person at Marvin Ridge, that's just me.
Okay.
And find out whether they, this is a true open event for the parents as well as kids, like what the objective is behind the, the celebration or party or gathering, and then...
At the end of the day, they're underage, right? So we gotta make sure we have enough adults there to maintain, you know, the, the sort of...
You still have to use the same formula as for giving a classroom.
If there's a code of silence, that's a huge code of silence happening, right? If something goes wrong, that's what I'm afraid of, because you don't, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you don't have constant oversight by, like, adults.
Right.
If it's only one parent, this one parent saying, sure, Billy, invite...
A hundred kids.
...a school, that would be different than you speaking to this person directly and saying, no, look, this is all the parents getting together, vermin of whatever, booster club or whatever. I don't know, how do you follow them? I still think you should talk to them, that's me.
And our next meeting is when?
Why don't we, hold on.
We haven't discussed, discussed...
I'm just wondering, if we have to table it, then our...
Your next meeting technically is scheduled for the 6th of August.
Of National Night Out. Um, why don't we put a pin in it again, and while we're going over the meeting minutes, Christina can call and see if she can get the person on the phone while we're going over the meeting minutes.
I can, I've got her number.
Yeah, and, and I mean, then we can...
Yeah, we can get her live, we can just talk about it and...
No, I don't wanna, no, I don't wanna back and forth, just have Christina call, like, while we're going over the minutes, and then...
Okay, so then, let's make sure we have all the questions for her, do we have all the questions for her at this point, for her to call?
That's what I was thinking.
Determine the ejectum and how many kids have, versus adults.
Right. Is it, is it a sanctioned school event?
Okay.
Is it related, is there, yeah, is there some...
That is, there's gonna be no, but...
And do we ask, will security be provided, because that's a fairly...
Are they willing to?
They've already said no. I mean, they, not that they're not willing, but they haven't planned it.
But they hadn't planned it.
So it's self-policing, I guess, through adults and parents and stuff.
I think you should straight out ask them, just to have it on the record, whether they will be any alcohol.
Alcohol.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they would have to apply for a permit.
Because even if it's from parents, which is fine, because we allow it, but they still need to get the permit, so I, I think asking that question's fine.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's allowed, it's just, right, we have oversight at least.
And in the meantime, I actually revised our policy in Albemarle for special events to include all this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So we can, we can work on that, so we actually have those...
Perfect, I think that's good.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we could add it to the action item list, we probably Yeah, I was gonna say, if we could add it to the action item list, we probably need to review that.
All right, so we make a motion to put a pin in, put this discussion on TB, yeah.
Same motion as before?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do.
Okay, all of the data, but passes, um, so next up we have a discussion and consider site plan revisions and re-did.
So. Start a recap for a second, 'cause it's been a little while since I've looked at this stuff. Back in, you know, early May, we received the three bids that came in potentially higher than what we had initially planned upon, and, um, so we've gone back and through some discussions with Canton Member School, there's some calculations that she's done, as well as with ESP, AMT being involved, and looked at the total square footage, to see if we could get it reduced under the thresholds that we would have to, to be relinquished of our stormwater requirements. We thought we were close, there's still some disparity with, with the numbers, but I still think that we are to the point where we're not gonna be able to get rid of the BMPs.
Um, with, so I didn't get a chance to do a, an addition of the sewer easement, but having just looked at it, again, I feel like, because so much of what I'm doing is just guesswork, it's possible, but we would have to find out, just for Village Hall, how much parking is required? I think we figured out, oh, twenty-three, twenty-three parking spaces, and then, and then the turnaround that I have sketched in, I know you had it in here somewhere, now all this. Yeah. Oh, there it is. Um, so the turnaround I sketched in on my page twenty-nine with the little bubbles. This stage like. I'm blank, no, it's the one that's set, it's got like little, uh, these three frame spaces are the difference between two options. It should be like the next page, I think. This one right here. This one? Yeah, that one.
This one?
This one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it looks like that, it's got bubbles.
Okay.
Yeah, the callouts, I mean, callout bubbles.
The hammerhead turnaround.
Yeah.
What bubbles are you talking about?
These things, these little callouts, got little callouts.
Oh, I'm looking for like.
Bubbles.
Okay. Uh, these three frame spaces are the difference between two, I got it, okay.
So, see all, like, all of that? I don't have a lot of pad, right, so I, I mean, I work on a graph that gives me a general perspective of ratio, but the difference in that driveway or a different design couldn't provide us with the difference we need on the easement. I just wouldn't know that unless someone, an engineer or someone else draws it. Do I think it can be done? Yeah, I do. Do I, can I do it and provide you with a hundred percent surety? No. So, we're so close that I find it hard to believe that anyone with a design skill can't find a good solution, because even just, just to give you an example, right, um, see that, that curve before the hammerhead? Number one, I don't even think, I don't even know if we need a hammerhead, number one. Number two, I left that driveway in just 'cause it was there, um, but that's a pretty, could be an unnecessary driveway. Um, and believe it or not, even just sections like that, I also saw my spreadsheet in here somewhere, is a few thousand square feet, so if you go up a couple pages to, to this spreadsheet, it's kinda fuzzy, but you'll see that. I think it's in here. Where's the driveway? Oh, this included the interior, an interior sidewalk. That probably can be taken out according to Tristan Manus' drawing. And, oh, here they are, did the turnaround, so you see the full turnaround is four thousand square feet on the side? The amended alternate was three thousand, so you can easily shave off like a couple thousand, um, square feet just working with the parking spaces in the driveway. Does that mean I know what everyone wants to do, if they wanna do it? No, but I'm saying, if that's the route we wanna go, I feel confident it can be worked out.
Well, we, and we've also had other discussions, AMT and I have had it about actually moving the truck turnaround, if you, if you pull right into the driveway.
Yeah.
Actually putting it kinda right here where that BMP was supposed to be.
What is a BMP?
The, it's a retention pond.
It just means best management practices and general, to general stormwaters.
Oh, so, sorry, I was like, that's a new term, I don't know what that means.
I do think you're right, that we could still work on the design a little bit, however, I wanted y'all to be aware that Tristan did tell me it was gonna be.
That was the killer.
Thirty or forty thousand dollars to redo the plans, so I didn't wanna spend a whole lot more time working on stuff if.
What?
If, you know, the consensus was, we weren't gonna go there.
Thirty to forty thousand to change the plans, like, that much?
'Cause he's got, he's got to change nearly, he's gonna change the grading, plans, he's gotta change a lot of them.
Now, that said, 'cause even though that's dumb, and it does stand, the difference between that and putting in BMPs is massive, right? Almost eight hundred thousand.
With these changes, now do we now have to put it off a rebid again?
Yep.
We would, yeah.
But if we spend the thirty or forty thousand dollars, are we guaranteed?
Well, we can. That we're not gonna have to do it?
Yeah.
We can just tell Tristan, look, work on it, if you feel like you can definitely get it to reduce that site work plan, so we don't have to do it, then we'll do it, but if not, then let's just don't even go down that route. I mean, we can, we can tell him that before we.
But I mean, you see, you know what my point is, like, if, if, if we spend the thirty or forty thousand dollars.
And it's still like, you know, a hundred feet away.
And, and we can't get rid of it, then there's zero point in spending the thirty or forty thousand dollars, you know what I mean?
That's where, yeah, a hundred percent, and that's where, I was a little bit, so what do you do? Do you just say, oh, yeah, do it, and then, what if he doesn't work hard enough? You know what I mean, you really, this is why I kinda asked.
How much are you gonna give if you don't pay him? How much can he tell you before?
Well, that, I mean, that's, but, but that's the question, like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna redo it, we need guarantees that we're gonna get rid of this retention pond, and it's gonna cut our site work substantially.
And I'll bring, I don't guess this is the right time to bring it up, this is why I think I was saying to you, I've heard and read in the minutes, that not everyone felt that ESP was as, I don't know, was as thorough as they wanted to be, or as enthusiastic, or resourceful, or as initiative, like taking the initiative. So, on that same point, I almost feel like we're so close, if you have an engineer that's working enthusiastically for you, they're gonna find a solution, like you have a problem solver. I think you're gonna find someone who can do it.
He's, he has been trying to work with us, he really has, he still goes back to that twenty thousand square foot threshold based on our ordinance, so we would have to change that because it ties back to Charlotte Mecklenburg, the whole twenty thousand, so he's, his, his head is stuck on that.
So, I, and, and I, I'm sorry, y'all, I, I got a, an email from DEQ that I meant to share with you. They're pretty easygoing about this idea that it falls just within those parameters, and, and they're fine withdrawing the permit. I was actually a little surprised to what extent.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't have it ready and, and send it.
So they were more willing to work with us than we would have thought they would have done?
Yes, oh, in fact, I called the local person in Mooresville, who then directed, had a great long talk with him. He actually said he was working on a public project that was running up against the same site work issues, and they were doing the exact same thing. So that was interesting, and he works for DEQ, and then he referred me to someone in Raleigh, and he wrote back a nice, long summary and didn't have any issues, and I spoke to him on the phone. So I think it can be done, if you're confident that Tristan can come up with a solution.
I mean, I would have the conversation with him, be like, listen dude, if we're gonna pay you thirty or forty thousand more dollars, then you gotta get it done.
Okay, let me, let me have a conversation with him.
I mean, very, very nicely, of course, we'll have that conversation, but, yes.
And, and going back and what we reconsidered bids, does this require the bond, uh, is it a million dollar bond?
The, it's the cost of the project, yeah.
So, 'cause it's, so it does require, and that's a state statute, okay. So just, so you know, in full disclosure, I play hockey with a guy, that he was asking how it was going along, yeah, must be a goalie too, so my, your husband probably knows him, but he was asking, he was, and I told him about where the bids came in and stuff, and he was very surprised, but, 'cause his number was a lot lower, I think you talked to him, his name's Evan, um, from North Carolina. So he's a smaller, he's a smaller contractor, but the problem was, because of smaller, with the bond, just so we all know, that we're dealing with major companies that can afford to float a hundred, and, and what he needed was a hundred thousand dollar cash, is what he told me, a hundred thousand dollars cash, and that sits out there, and they get very little interest on it, but it sits out there and flows out there for an additional eighteen months, even if he didn't get the award, so.
Is that right?
So, so, because his number was a lot less, he goes, wow, we were, like, I said, well, the site plan was, my understanding was in the seven hundred thousand dollar range, is based on what, if I remember correctly, and he was very surprised with that, and he was also, he said, but he said, here's some, just so you know, that why I couldn't bid on it is because he just didn't have the ability to fund it, so, so having that small guy come in here and probably do this is probably not gonna happen, or we're not gonna see that just because of the bond requirements for a big company that's doing the.
Yeah, and I don't know how.
But isn't the bond, but isn't it a percentage of the actual cost, right?
Uh, they, they have to be bonded, I think, for the entire cost of the project.
Right, so if we bring that cost of the project down by eight hundred thousand, right, hopefully.
I mean, we could say the cost of the project's five hundred thousand dollars, and then, I mean, like, but, but that's why, like, if we're setting the number, then how?
Well, we're setting the number based on what.
The bids.
The, no, not the bids, but what the architecture is, is basically how, what the whole scope of things is.
So can't you just, wow.
Yeah, because of the company, right?
Yeah.
We, we were doing, we set that limit because we wanted companies with a certain degree of surety, financial surety, to bid on the project. So it, it is, it, those are our requirements.
And the bids are required by statute.
So that's, that's what I'm asking, if, if it is a state statute that we can't control, and it's just, oh, too bad for the small guy who, who's done contract work, and he says, you know, really, I've dealt with twenty thousand dollar jobs that had taken forever because of committee, so I don't know if he was necessarily interested in moving forward, but that's one of the issues that they faced.
Or the insurance is statute.
Both, they have to have insurance.
The bond too, is it?
Yeah, and I don't know how bond, I mean, bond companies could work different ways, and so I don't know if it would behoove him to just look for a different bonding agency.
I love that word, behooves. Um, so what number, what number are we giving them that they are basing their bond number off of?
They're basing it off of their, their bid cost.
Their bid cost.
Their bid cost.
Right.
Yeah, so then they gotta go back and get a bond, separate, with a separate company.
But if we lower costs.
You need to insure me on this, and that bond company's gonna take the whole money aside.
So, so, so our lowest bid was one point seven, so their, so their bond would go off of that number? So then can't this guy just say it's gonna be eight hundred thousand? Well, I guess you don't wanna do that, 'cause then you have to commit eight hundred thousand.
If we have no site work and no BMP, right? The cost is gonna go down significantly, and so a lot of these smaller companies probably would be able to bid.
But they're looking at the site work that we have with Architect, right?
Yes.
When they're, when they're putting their packages together, their bids together, right?
They're based on the site work that, yeah.
The plans that they're given.
This plan would change.
But, but he also said, looking at it, and again, this is just interesting, 'cause he was, he threw the number at me, he says, you know, my site work was three hundred thousand, and I'm like, wow, I said, you know, but again, it's a smaller company, and not having to, to deal with it, and maybe there's a little more margin in there for those larger companies that are the only ones that end up being able to bid on these things.
It's an interesting question, probably not something we could speak to here, but I did find it fascinating that in speaking to the first guy in Mooresville from DEQ, he's on the Boys and Girls Club Committee, so he kinda got a little, you know, talking about his personal involvement, they wanted to build a facility, was three or four, ten thousand square feet, and he, they did the same thing, though. They budgeted for site work, and, but what it came back was disproportionate to the building, disproportionate, it was like over a million some odd dollars, and he did, as a DEQ agent, he didn't expect that, so I'm wondering if the bond amounts are increasing, because it's, it's going to be the responsibility of the contractor, right, at the end, to be sure that when you put in drainage, and you're meeting with a, a state agency, you need to be a hundred percent sure that you've secured those inserts, right, in those installations. If we don't have that, it may be a whole different ballgame. That's why I, I'd love to see him work, see what he can do for now, I don't think we have, if we wanna do it, I don't think we have a choice except to consider this down on a smaller scale.
And I'll, I'll have that conversation with Tristan and see where we go.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I agree with Adam, I mean, I think if we're, if we're gonna move forward with this, we've gotta get the numbers down, 'cause those other numbers are crazy.
So, do you wanna talk about, since we're talking about Village Hall?
Yeah, so.
Something that just came up as of yesterday, so.
So, you know, we had talked about looking at the ninety-nine year lease with the existing area, and Joe said he was gonna call the pastor, and he did, and Joe and I actually met with Scott and.
Robbie.
Robbie.
Smith, I think his last name is.
Yesterday, um, who is on their board, they call it a session.
As one of the elders.
Board of elders.
Yeah, Board of Elders.
So.
Which, the pastor's on it as well, he's a, a member.
There's, there's three men, three women, and the pastor, so there's a total of six, or seven. Um, so we met with them yesterday and just kind of said, hey, listen, we're not offering anything, we wanna be good neighbors, we've been good neighbors, and wanna continue to do that, you know, we're, like, kinda, what are your guys' thoughts? And they're like, we absolutely don't wanna sell, which we knew, but they, they were actually the ones that brought up.
This was interesting.
Um, like, doing a long-term lease, now, they floated out twenty years, and I was like, no, I was like, if we did something new, I'd be like, a long-term lease. But they found it very interesting, very, um, it could be lucrative for both parties, because they would get the liability of the build, of the current building off of their hands, and upkeep and everything, and they would continue to get some income. But we would, we would, the building, the maintenance of the property, but then we would just give them rent for the, or lease money.
Lease long-term, so a lot of those things, so we, we both agreed this, that we were talking, this is, ideas are free, so it was an idea, they asked what we wanted from them, I said, well, we'd ask that you take it back to your elders to see if they're even interested. If they're not interested, then we just keep continuing, but if there is interest, then it would come back to us to kinda say, okay, does this make sense? Because what I said, one of our biggest costs would probably be, um, from a site work standpoint, 'cause obviously whatever we do with the building, but putting in that sewer line to the property, which, which is running that line, so there's, there's something, and I think they all agreed that this is kind of the heart, and they thought, they, they actually, I was surprised that they, before I even started discussing it, they says, well, we're not looking to sell, but we, you know, we, we talked about some things, and he was gonna present it, we did tell him we were gonna probably talk about it in this meeting, that we didn't wanna step on his toes, but he said he would have an email out to his group to kinda make that decision, but if, if they said yes, they would be open to it, then that would be put on us to kinda do our workings, and that's where I said, well, we would step out of that, maybe have attorneys figure out what the actual thing, but before we even did that, then you'd have to say, okay, what is the site work on this? They were curious about how much property they wanted to, uh, that we were interested in, those sort of things, so. It was a very good discussion, I mean, they were, you know, for the most part, we talked about a lot about what we envisioned, they were very into not building, you know, I mean, open space.
Yeah, they were, they, they wanted to keep things open, green space, um, all that stuff. But they're, they're, they, those two individuals think that it's a, it's a interesting idea that could be good for both groups, um, but they have no idea how their, how their boards going to react, which is, which, you know, you know, we talked about it here, and we said, well, let's, you know, just go and have that conversation, and, you know, those two individuals thought it could be interesting, and thought that some people could be interested in it, but they're gonna talk to them, and we wanted to bring it back and said, there may be some interest, but ultimately, we have to wait for them to come back, and we may decide that that's not what we wanna do.
Right.
Um, so, it, it, it's not, not an option.
So when it came to the ninety-nine year lease, though, did they at any point say that was something they?
We didn't even get into that, 'cause that was like too, too, because she, they said twenty, and Kim right away said, I don't think we're interested in twenty, and I, we, you would want it to be minimum, probably, I would guess, if I'm, I'm speaking off the cuff here, but fifty here.
Minimum, yeah.
Yeah, minimum.
'Cause we're, just, just to make sure I'm getting parameters, right, we're still talking about us investing for the building, us developing.
Correct.
Everything is us.
So in that, so in that land lease, what you're doing is you're basically leasing the land, so you're, it's just, they pay the tax value on the land only, and then we own the building and the maintenance, so they, that issue they had a year or so ago with the AC unit, which by the way, we could take that AC unit and use it for the new building. I mean, I would think so, right, it would be part of the, you know, I mean, why, why spend more than what you have?
What else could we take?
I know.
I was wondering about lamps, right away I was like, maybe some lamps, but I think those are all ours. But at the end of the day, I think it, it was a very good conversation, they were, yeah, I mean, 'cause I've never met with any of the, any of them at all, and I met Robbie for the first time, and he was, uh, very enjoyable to, to, to talk with, that they were, you know, just, they just, they, they thought maybe one person may not be interested in even discussing anything, 'cause that, you know, but they, they said it would, I, I think there's been discussion before on that, and they were very open to it.
So let me just ask this, so I'm just comparing apples, apples. What, are, are we talking about demolishing this and potentially building something just like we would build down there?
Yes.
Uh, that's what.
I mean, that's what I have in my head.
That's a great, yeah, I don't, I don't see how, so I told them, so keep in mind, this is, we don't have approval from our own council, we just said, let's, let's go talk to them.
Yeah.
We, we would probably wanna pose this to the community, too, I don't know, but, um, I said, one of the biggest challenges for us would be, where do we go while we're doing this reconstruction and stuff, what, you know, do you rent a home, do you go to another municipality and say, hey, can we rent some office space and, and, and work, you know, for that seven months that we get the, the plans built and stuff like that? You know, I mean, I, I kinda gave them my vision of, if I, if I was, you know, could paint a picture and stuff, that, look, the Union County may expand those inner, those roundabouts are already designed to fail within about ten to fifteen years, is what we're told. They agreed with that, and that, that there's an easement there for a double, which means that they potentially could widen this, so ideally, if we're in the road business and we own all the neighborhoods, why not own roundabout to roundabout, so the state can never come in and, you know, we can control the speed, we can control all those things, you never have to worry about this, this corridor being disturbed at all in that, and then taking that other corner that we own, and doing, making it a gathering place for like, you know, where we talked about, whether it's acoustical events, and amphitheater, and food trucks, where you're not building anything in, and on that corner and stuff. But they liked that idea, they were just, they, they thought that kinda stuff, we're saving green space and not building more buildings and stuff, but they, they know this is a house that they're limited in what they can do with it right now, and, uh, they, with what the, what's a zone for residential, right? So there's limited things that they can do once we do leave, and it just may be in the, you know, we've been good renters for, for the most part, um, we're not here on weekends, we don't have parties and that kinda stuff, I mean, it could be beneficial in many ways, but it, it was just an opening discussion, and I just wanna keep you guys abreast of what we talked about.
Would it, so, would it, I mean, I, I know, this might be questions you don't have answered to, but just things that occur to me. So there would obviously be a lease amount for that ninety-nine year, is it the same, would it be, did you get a sense of whether that would be equivalent to the rent that we're paying now, what?
No, no idea, they did say something about having like an annual, uh, increase per inflation, like the inflation rate.
After so many years.
Um, but not, we, we did not talk, nothing, no.
Keep in mind, they're still paying the taxes on the land, um, I, I see it as a bonus for them, if you think about it, their congregation grows. What's, they would probably utilize our parking spaces, because nobody's here anyways, and I don't think the Villas is gonna mind if they're using a parking space, if their, their, their property goes, so, but they had, there was no talk about a number and stuff, 'cause I don't even know what that number, that would make sense.
I don't either.
But they would need to pay taxes.
What would be, what would be the time, the, you know, again, to find out?
Their next meeting is in August.
Towards the end of August, they said.
Fairly early in August.
'Cause it would seem to me if we had any idea of doing that, we wouldn't wanna spend any more money on the other side, but until we know.
The only reason I'm bringing it up, Nick.
Until we know that.
I heard forty thousand dollars, I was like, wow.
I'll just say this, look, at this point, you know, a little bit close to election, I, I, I had pretty much figured nothing was gonna happen, but you have to excuse me, but I just gotta say, though, when we talked about talking to these people, this was like two months ago, right? And so I was really hoping that if you were gonna have the conversation, Joe, that you'd had it two months ago, so that by the time, and we missed a meeting, that by this meeting, we could actually, if we're gonna do it at all, like, I'm at this point where I have just. Like I'm at this point where I have to just be done with it or do something. And in, and I, I honestly, at this point, don't care what we do because we're at that point. But I don't like the idea that we're just kinda like.
Kicking the can?
Yeah, like, and I, and I hope we're not, and I, I hope we're not doing this for, you know, for delay reasons. I don't believe that's the case. I know people have been away, but it just, and remember not, you can, we kinda went through that before, right? Where the council said, yeah, go ahead and talk to them. And then it takes like two, three months. Like, at this point.
You gotta have meetings too. I mean, we, we have to have meetings.
Well, you, yeah, but you just said you met with them yesterday.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if that meeting had taken place two months ago, then maybe we would've had some of that information today. And we could've just said, okay, this option or this option. But if we have to, and I'm only saying this because I'm just, I'm not getting upset, I just feel like we have to put this stuff on the table. Because we now have, we have met, it is the summer. Usually I'm gone for months in the summer FYI. So here I am and we're deciding, do we spend money to have this? Like we're near the back door, right? We're all, all on our way out nearly. And if, a month or two makes a huge difference when we're talking about spending forty thousand dollars for a plan and then having that bid and then getting that act on. So I think it's great in some ways. I just, it just feels like, when we say we're gonna explore, we gotta, like, we gotta get, get it done.
I mean, the problem, the problem, the problem I look at, I mean, and it's not, I mean, we're still the council, but I mean, we're getting to the point where, again, we're basically on our way out. We're gonna have a new council coming in for us to make the decision a month before they come in or whatever.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think I wanna do that. Certainly, this is not a delay tech, cause I, I was, six years ago, I came in here and said, why are we in this building? Because of the.
Yeah, I remember that. You were actually really upset when you did that.
I couldn't believe we were in the building. And I, nothing against buildings, but it made, it made no sense.
He was even angry, huh?
But, but the, you know, I mean, and things, things change too. I mean, we just now saw the, the property down here come up for sale and stuff.
Which one?
The one on the corner.
This one.
Audrey, Audrey property.
The Audrey's?
Yeah, on this corner of Marvin and Newtown.
Oh, really?
With the pond.
Wasn't it up for sale before then?
It hasn't been for a while.
Not officially, like where there's a realtor side, there's a realtor side there now. That's the only reason I knew that it, it was up for sale and I thought, wow. And that may be because of what's coming down the pipeline with the roundabout and stuff. And how much land that, that they may take and what the zoning, what it looks at.
Well, and, you know, I know we're going a bit off topic, but we did look at that before. But there's a lot of things I liked about that property. Number one was the smell. Number two, what else?
That's what you liked about Mary, you liked the smell.
Wait, wait, number two was the smell?
Hold on, hold on.
Your, your issues were the smell, the smell, and the smell.
I can actually, like, smell it as I'm talking. The reasons I did not like the property were number one, the smell. Although we said, we clearly fixed it for twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a deal.
I think it's not been an issue.
Oh, God, I drove by the other day with smells.
Oh, yeah, I did it, cause I had to, was about to agree, but it always comes sneaking back.
We're not in that area.
But I think, I remember.
My house.
Didn't we look at it, Nick, and it had drainage issues or something? There was something on the topography.
I mean, it's the pond back there, so I don't know. I've never been on the property, so I don't know.
So there's two houses on the property, is that not like a?
Yeah, but only one of them, I think, is included in that. I think the one closest to the church here has been carved out, like.
I was gonna say.
So it's just the one that's down the long driveway.
Okay, so the rental property is cut out of this?
I think so. From what I can, what I could tell on the map, cause I went and looked, I wanted to see how much they were asking for.
Right, so, but anyway, so things change and stuff. To your point, yeah, there's a, a new council coming in in a very short amount of time. I, but I, I'm not opposed if, if, if you're saying we're gonna spend another forty thousand dollars to do something, then I thought, well, let's take a pause here and see if, you know, what is it? And, and can you take that, that drawing and just move it over here?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, yeah, I mean, if, if that meeting is not till the end of August, that puts us into September, at least, before we have a meeting, which is two months before the new council comes in.
Right. And, and again, it's.
And again, I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, we're with sitting council, we have the right to do it, but do we wanna?
I don't know if I would wanna do that.
A, a new council coming in that.
I agree, Nick, I don't think that anything's gonna get done or decisions are gonna be made with us, a lot of council leaving and new council coming in and stuff. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't.
No, that's not a strong possibility.
I don't know, I don't wanna stop, I don't wanna stop like moving something forward just because of that.
No.
Cause I'm gonna be here.
The closer you get to that date, right? The more I discomfort there is, so.
Yeah, that's all, I get it. And I, I'll be honest, I'm, I, I like the idea of doing here, it's flat, there's minimal site work, it's in the middle of town. We would own the building, but we wouldn't own the land. There's just something there that just, and I'll be honest, there's just something there that just. I don't, it may, I don't.
Well, I, I've never been on a long-term lease either, so I, I mean, but there are always places across the country that, that they're never gonna be.
All across the world.
But they work, they do work.
Oh, I know, like, like down in, down in the islands, they have ninety-nine year leases down in St. Lucia that you can buy a house, but it's a ninety-nine year lease, and then you gotta, oh, but they were doing the lease.
Yeah, I know.
Not that I'm gonna be here ninety-nine years, but. But.
That's what we're all banking on.
Sorry, I went out of the thing, but here's the thing, there's nothing, there, there's, I think, of course, if they're gonna be open to a deal, that would be a great one, right? They're still getting their income, they're getting their taxes paid for. They, and, you know, I, I think I was the first to mention it, why wouldn't you? You want a great tenant, it's better than having a household.
Right.
Um, you know, I've also, I've also shared with you, Joe, before, the fact that you're in the middle. If you have like picnic tables and you actually make a gathering spot, you've now got the churchgoers that are sort of, you know, hopefully.
Utilizing.
More and more parishioners to the church. So it could be very symbiotic, you know, like I've said many, many times before. On the other hand, so that, I can't see why they would say no to a lease. Purchasing, I knew would never go over.
Yeah.
That said, they do have a tough board. And anytime things have gone to the board, that tends to be when they fall apart. So there's that. And in the meantime, Cam's hitting on this, I think I've hit on it before. I'm kinda a little old-fashioned about this idea that you're paying money into something to improve something, build something, put in drainage, especially if we're talking about adding sewer lines and whatever else, when it's not our land. So here's a thought, this idea that you can lease this property never goes away, right? In a, in a sense, well, not never, but you know, it, it's something you could continue to work on. If you're making site improvements on the corner, there's still nothing stopping you from having made those improvements, selling that land later, turning that land into something else, whatever the case is. But you've at least invested on your own property in the interim and you've got another option you can work out. I don't, I feel like we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna need more than one building eventually. I don't know if that's right around the corner, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that this idea goes out of play.
So what you're saying, Mary, is regardless of what we do on the corner, we're still gonna have to do some site work and we're still gonna, so we might as well go ahead and get the plans done for it and spend the money to get the plans done regardless of if we end up putting the building there or if we do a farmers market. Cause we are gonna have to improve the land.
Gonna have to do something, right?
Site work for a building versus site work for just a, for an amphitheater.
Yeah, but an amphitheater, like.
That's a whole other phase though, right?
Right, but, but you're gonna have, you're still gonna have parking, you're still gonna have that impervious surface that you're having to do the site work for, correct? I mean.
But it may not be within the threshold that's requiring those retention laws.
But if we put a farmers market there along with an amphitheater, then those are probably gonna start clicking up in there.
Depending on how you phase it.
Right.
But I do have an idea in my head that I wanna talk to Chaplin about that would be a closed session topic related to this. So if y'all can give me some time to go back and talk with Tristan and see if he's, he can pretty much guarantee us.
Time.
And then in the meantime, I can crunch the numbers with comparisons and talk with, um, talk with Chaplin about a potential idea.
Yeah, so you don't want us to move on this today or, or anything?
Well, we, we'll have to get, we need to get numbers to crunch for purposes of comparing apples to apples. And I will, in the meantime, talk with Tristan. If he's pretty much guaranteed me to say, I can get you below the threshold, you know, to reduce, revise the plans, then we can pull that trigger at the next meeting. Can we, how about we do this? I know, maybe it's just me, and maybe it's not necessary. When's the next meeting? How many weeks? August sixth. What days are today? Well, I know we're gonna change it, but.
Right now, schedule. Wednesday and. It's like a week and a half.
We are ready to change it, right?
Yeah.
Well, should we, I'm just wondering, um, could, should we at least authorize Christina with the ability to act on, what is it, Rule twenty-six? So that you can, if there's something that Tristan needs to explore, I don't know, that you can kinda pull us and get an okay? Are you all right with that? Are you guys okay with that?
As far as expanding, what do you? As far as expanding, Jim?
Well, more like, I don't know, I don't know what he's gonna say in return. Like, have you, to what extent have you talked to him about, about them previous?
Redry your plans, yeah.
Um, just, just the fact that we've looked at the, the maps that are in here and compared it. Then we actually met with AMT and looked at design options of how we could change things. AMT had some, some good input.
Oh, they did, oh, good, okay.
Um, again, Tristan's still hung up on the twenty thousand, so that's, I've gotta get him over that before we can really have a, a serious conversation. Which I feel like is workable, we just need to amend our ordinance. And he, he was not interested in, um, putting his stamp on the approval until we could amend our ordinance. So I feel like the twenty thousand, because it says all developments have to follow.
So do we need to just go ahead and do that? I mean, is that gonna hurt anything if we just go ahead and do that?
I feel like we should, I feel like we should at least, if, if we wanna try to make strides, as even as a council, I think that now is the time, we should keep making strides. Otherwise, it does look like later we tried to shove something in at the last minute.
That's what I'm saying, right, so should we go ahead and change the ordinance? Like, you guys go ahead and start working on changing it and you can say, hey, Tristan.
Doesn't that have to go before the planning board?
Well, here's a funny thing, I had a draft ordinance for the Village Center District that was gonna reduce a lot of the requirements for all the properties down the center. That's the funny thing, that's, I don't know, it's taking so long. But including the setbacks, including the, you know what I mean, the BIP requirements? So it's not something we weren't thinking about doing anyway. My only concern is just changing the ordinance without creating a Village Center District. You know what I'm saying? Like, if we change it the way it's written now, it changes it across the board.
It does.
So I'm saying, so that still takes two or three months by the time we go to the planning board and they discuss it.
We'd have to rezone it.
Rizone it.
I wish, yeah. I don't know.
We have to rezone the corner?
Well, I mean, if she's talking about doing like a, almost like an.
Right.
Independent district, basically. If we cut out a district so that those reduced standards only apply to the Village Center District, we would have to, then we would have to rezone to the Village Center District. I'm just working it out, talking out loud. I'm just a little afraid about changing the ordinance and having it apply across the board.
So you're saying only change the ordinance for the Village Center District? But if we do it for the Village Center District, then we've got to rezone it, okay.
We still don't, technically we have a land use plan with a village song.
No.
That's true.
No, that's, no.
And the only other thing that came up is, you know, they're concerned what happens with this corridor, with how busy South Carolina is and this. And they talked about, um, asking for a historical designation. Designation, and I says, I'm, that's not my purview. But I did tell him to reach out to Rohit and find out what the process and what, how does that protect him?
See, this is all that planning stuff that I've been working on for years. When, when I researched it, it was a lot less intense to go for the historic district than to do a special assessment area. And a special assessment area, you can do a lot, get a lot of the same benefits without having to create a whole historic design board and so on and so forth, which is required with a historic board. But anyway, we're kinda going off topic. I'm just thinking about the ordinance.
So Tristan's not gonna get comfortable with the under twenty thousand until we change our ordinance.
But as long as he knows that we're working on it, I feel like he would be okay with.
But we can't, but we can't work on it until we do the Village Center District and rezone everything?
Unless you change the ordinance across the board for everybody. I have an idea, see, I'm thinking, what if we created a conditional use permit for now? And maybe we should probably take this offline and talk about solutions, but we could do this. Whereas if you want to go over a certain amount, you have to do a conditional use permit just for now until the VC district is done, if it's done. And that way, the council would assess whether or not there's an impairment, you know, material danger impairment, and then they can reduce that standard. We would have to create the conditional, it would be a conditional use permit though, as opposed to a district, a new zoning district. We could do that. I don't know, I, I can't explain it without getting a lot, long, but there's, there is another way to do it.
Okay, so.
But we would still have to.
So I've got to plan.
Still have to be planning board, it would still have to come, yeah.
Stop that public hearing, stop that public.
But we can change it for ourselves and if it's over twenty thousand, then they have to get the conditional use permit and go through the process, whereas we would not for that corner.
What you would do is you would change it based on the use. So you would say any business use or any non-retail use or, right, this would be written up. And so any governmental use, something like that, low impact, and that's actually a term in NC DOT's rulebook. Any low-impact use can't, you know, is not required within these parameters, right? You can actually say, on Newtown Road, that is such and such, whatever the standards are, does not need to meet this requirement with a conditional, with the approval of a conditional use permit. Say, sorry.
I would have required, I would require a public hearing into it.
This, the zoning change would require a public hearing, but it wouldn't require rezoning for us later. But the process would be the same because you're doing a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. But no matter which way you do it, any of these things are text amendment. So, and, and all, any text amendment would have a public hearing.
But we're just not rezoning it.
Right. But I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, the process is the same whether you're doing a text amendment or rezoning. Use permit. Except, here's the difference, when we do rezoning here, we have to go through public input meetings, right? We have to, two of them, right? You have to send out wide-ranging, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just saying, for something that's small and really tightly controlled.
Well, when people start to.
For now.
People up here would freak out for a rezoning notice.
Right.
And be like.
And I don't wanna, and I'll be honest, I don't wanna create in, in a hurry, I don't wanna create a, a Village Center District in a hurry.
Wrong.
Yeah.
Correct, not agree with that.
So the easiest way to do it for now would be put some control on it, do a conditional use permit based on particular parameters, designate the area, and you can still get by.
All right, so if we tell Tristan that we're working on this and we've got like some ideas, when you give him, then maybe he'll.
Yeah. When's the next planning board meeting or this thing in process?
Uh, I wanna say it's the nineteenth, let me check the calendar here.
I think you're right.
Yeah, they've already had it this month, so.
Okay, so.
It's actually the twentieth, excuse me, nineteenth on the Monday.
But they can do a special meeting if they really want to.
As long as they're available, I'm not sure.
If y'all want them to.
Yeah.
So that's my thought.
Okay, so, so we're directing Christina to talk to Tristan, give him this update. You guys start working on.
The conditional use permit language.
Yeah. And then we'll revisit it in the first meeting in August?
No, no, planning board is not meeting for me.
No, but we'll find out what Christina finds out from Tristan.
Yeah, so that's a separate issue, cause Tristan wants to know that we're working on it.
Yeah.
But then there's the actual site plan issue.
Yeah.
So you want us to wait, right, for what? Yeah, there's no point in me, there's no point in doing all this if Tristan can't get the numbers below where they need to be.
Oh, you need to have that conversation with him.
From the, the DEQ standpoint, the, the total disturbance. So I need to have that conversation with him first.
Okay.
And if we can do that, then we need to address the twenty thousand via your method that you just. I think we should start working on it anyway, so that if Tristan is ready, that's going to the planning board. Okay, so I can have that conversation with Rohit when he returns today. And I don't, if the council doesn't mind, I don't mind helping to work that solution out. Okay.
But if the planning board meets August twentieth, then we gotta schedule a public hearing in September.
We could, and see, it doesn't really, like, it matters, but it doesn't matter in the sense that we can continue with site plans as long, with that ordinance, right? It's only when you go to make an approval.
Yeah.
On the bid, that you should have that ordinance in place.
So it's not that big of a, cause we're not gonna be ready for rebidding until, for a while.
And that we could call, we could call off the public hearing in August, the end of August and have it.
In September.
In September, early September. And that's when the ordinance would take a bid.
And then hopefully the rebid will be, if, if that's the right way, the rebids will be ready by then. be ready by then.
See, that's why, so let's think about it, because if he takes another two, I know, if he takes another two weeks, right? And then he draws the site plans, taking that's gonna be another three weeks, then we're gonna have to bid, that's like another month and a half we're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's if the Planning Board manages to meet, because they've, they've been
Oh, no, forget Planning Board, we're gonna, no, just the site plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd say, but then, uh, you know, still gotta go to Planning Board somewhere.
If we need it, it doesn't, here's the funny thing, we've done it, I mean, if y'all want to, we can, but the reality is, if, if it stays in the same district and you're building by right, it doesn't need to go to the Planning Board.
It's not gonna be a text amendment?
No, this conditional use permit, at that point, if that's approved, that would go to the Planning Board. But nothing that's built by right, at, needs a public hearing or a Planning Board review. We sent it to them anyway, right? The design?
Yeah.
But it's not a requirement. Nothing that is non-residential
Right.
Except for redistricting, which is different.
But if we're changing new ordinance, it's not by right, or we're changing it, it's by right.
Yeah, but that's different than the site plan, like, having the site plan revised, right? If we, so let's put it this way, you said yes today, just saying, Tristan, go ahead and draw it. He came back by August. We looked at it and was like, yep, that's good, go to bid. We would not have to go to Planning Board again with the site plans. In the meantime, though, before we pick a bid, right, because this now is going to get
You're running two things parallel with each other.
Yes, now you're, you're looking at the conditional use permit language, it goes to the Planning Board, there's a public hearing, that's it, because there's no, nothing else, just a public hearing. And then we review that language and hopefully pass that.
So with that, they already have the parameters, what they did on as far as what we're changing with this, they have that parameters and they're, but even though they're not approved yet, they would have those, that parameter of what the build, what setbacks are, and all those things?
Yes, because we're not changing that, right? We're, we're not, that's kind of why I wish they had waited, because for the, I won't distract myself here. We're not changing anything about where the home's located, nothing like that. The site plan's not changing. The only thing that's changing is the
Imperious services.
Right, exactly.
And the gardens for that.
So if anything, they've already approved greater impact use
Mm-hmm.
Than what we're providing.
And we're trying to get rid of
Yes, and remember, the only thing
Two different issues.
Two different issues. The only thing you go to, to the Planning Board for right now, for, when it's in the same district, is design review. Maybe that's what you're thinking of. Design review is different than site plan review. Planning Board doesn't need to look at site plan review at all, and, and
She, she's basically saying, you can pull the trigger today and say, Tristan, go do your thing, and then in the meantime, staff will start addressing a completely separate issue to address stormwater.
Correct, and to get, and to get Tristan comfortable with the under 20,000.
Right. And Planning Board would review that text amendment, it would not change the site plan, something they don't have to see anyway, but it wouldn't change the site plan?
Yeah, it's two, it's two issues running parallel at the same time moving forward.
Right.
Once you go to a text amendment, you have that public input meeting?
Yeah, just a public hearing.
Just a public hearing. Which that would just be
So what, you know, so I mean, the timeline, what are we looking at?
So you, you could still
Two months.
Yeah, you could still go to, oh, if you did both of them, September-ish.
No, but I mean, by the time we set out the bids, by the time we get the bids back, or
It would be done by then. If, if, if the Planning Board knows why we're doing it, right? Um, and we know what we're doing, it should, it, it should be pretty quick. I mean, Planning Board and then council, and then it's
Right, and then the bids, the bids go out, the bids have to be out for whatever, three weeks, and we gotta get the bids back, and we gotta open a bid, and we gotta
And then once you select a bid, that ordinance should already be, be passed by then.
So it's gonna be two months.
So it's gonna be two months. Yeah, the, the longer part of this, right now, the way I see it, is authorizing the funds, getting Tristan to draw the plans, going out to bid, and then just letting him bid.
But I feel like we can't authorize him until he is 100% sure that he's gonna be able to get that under the 20,000, because there's no point in spending the money if he can't do it.
Forty, 42,000.
So could we
Or whatever the number is.
Oh, it went up?
Whatever.
What?
Well, no, 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 for the, for the DEQ threshold, the one acre disturbance.
Oh, okay.
As long as we're under there, we're good. And then if we're moving parallel to change our 20,000, it's okay.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the numbers are.
So yes.
Y'all would just need to authorize
Just yes.
Y'all would need to authorize me to enter a contract with him too, because we don't, our current contract is to the point where it's almost financially spent.
Okay. Well, let's find out if he can do it, that's the first conversation, get him comfortable with the numbers.
And then
And then in a week and a half, we'll hopefully have an answer by then from you, from him, and then we can make a decision.
Could we all agree that this is one issue we wanted to kind of keep letting us know, give us regular updates on what's going on? And then, like we do today, have it at the beginning of the, yeah, at the meeting? Again, not because I want to rush, I just want to make people understand that this is something we've been working on and we continue to work on.
Yeah, we're not piddling them, we're not, we're not trying to kick the can with, I'm not. I mean, I either want to do something or
Exactly, that's true, and I'm not too, so, okay. It's only, what, a week and a half? Is everyone gonna be here?
Well, we have to change the date, which is on the agenda.
Oh.
Because it's scheduled for national night out right now.
Okay. August, I'm going away in August too. All right.
Okay.
Wait, we good? Are we good?
Done on the bill?
I'm good.
Do we, you don't need anything else from us? Oh, can I just make a motion that we, um, we actually, we need to do this? Are we all in agreement with having the text amendment prepared for the Planning Board review?
Yes.
Yeah, that needs to be a motion.
Go ahead, there, Mary.
So I make a motion that we, um, propose amendments to zoning and/or subdivision standards addressing, well, I'm just gonna say as required, or, sorry, as discussed? I'm just thinking. Um, and that the Planning Board review those text changes at their next meeting, and if no recommendation is provided, that it be forwarded to the Village Council at the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Following the Village Council meeting, okay. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Good.
Hi. Is it, are you guys okay with me helping out with that? I just wanna be sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so that passes unanimously. Next up, we have authorize, I didn't see the discussion, authorize the tax collector to collect 2,019 taxes for show to NGGS 105, S221.
Somebody have a problem with me as he collecting the taxes?
Yeah.
All right, so
All those in favor?
I know.
Make a motion for
Yeah, make a motion to, oh, consider the appointment of Nancy Schneberg, a tax collector, and authorize her to collect the 2,019 taxes for the Village of Marvin.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
I, I'm not gonna butcher her last name.
Isn't she here either, Sarah?
Do it every year.
Yeah, but she had to do it every year.
I'm not appointed though, she's not, well, she will reappoint, not to be reappointed, just authorize her.
Yes, yeah.
I didn't
Well, y'all do minutes, I'm gonna get a call.
Yep, perfect.
You don't wanna say
Nancy's gotta go make a call.
Oh, we're doing the minutes now?
Yep, Mary, we're doing the minutes now. Everybody gets your minute house.
Next up, we have a discussion of meeting minutes for
February 8th. We're gonna do them in order
Okay.
Of what's on the agenda.
First up is
Is that the, right, for February?
Yes.
Discussion of meeting minutes for, first up, we have 2, 8 of 19. Let's have a chance to review them.
Yes, I have, I just have to find the right folder, one sec. Um
I have no reason
Minutes.
And all this information that was attachments and all that?
Those are the attachments based on what was at the meeting.
All three of them in the minutes.
Yes.
And they're always included, we just don't see them normally, right?
Normally, you don't see them. But with this process, you're gonna see them.
Okay, that sounds good, no, I like that.
I, I like that thing, a healthy discussion.
Healthy discussion, there was a healthy discussion.
Well, I kind of like it better than a, a discussion in depth.
I'll just say, you're gonna, you're gonna hate me, I actually suggested we take it out, because then if you, what if it's not healthy?
Well, I don't care, I mean, if you're in it, you'll
What if it's a single?
What if it's single?
That's okay. But it was cute.
How about an in-depth discussion?
I think that, I, I think I was doing so many, I just thought
And then they're gonna change it up.
I'm gonna do in-depth, so if, wherever that is, just let me know where.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry.
So that's the only question I had, all those records go with it, so that's, anyone else have any concern on 2, 8 of 19?
Okay, can I be my pain in the rear?
Go. Do it.
Sorry, Barbie, I'll just apologize ahead of time, and you can forgive me. And, um, okay, so if we scroll to the top Okay, so remember what we talked about before, we're gonna take, we're gonna take annual retreat out of there, right? It's okay if you put it underneath somewhere, but I personally think our minutes should be uniform, it's like, right, the formatting part. So if you want to put the retreat somewhere in the title, like below
Bank Fellowship Hall.
But, yeah, just so we want to make sure that the layout is uniform, so it would just be Village Council Meeting Minutes, that's it, even just council meeting minutes if you want. That's my first thought.
And just the annual retreat under Bank Fellowship Hall, 1012.
Oh, okay, I, I understand now. I was trying to figure out now. What are you talking about? Okay, well, that's fine with me, if that, if that's what you want to do, okay, so
Am I looking at the right one?
I don't know.
I have this, oh, I'm sorry, I've got the budget work session ones, same date, right?
No, this is, no, February 8th is the annual retreat. That would, that would have been the very first set of minutes in your packet. So while you, while you find that, I'll go ahead and make the, so you, so you know what our process is gonna be.
Oh, I reviewed those for the last set, sorry.
That's okay, and then we're gonna put our annual retreat here, right?
There you go, perfect.
When's, the next, the next meeting is which? March 18th?
Uh, well
March 12th, budget work session.
But just to be clear, so if it's okay with you all, because we may not necessarily get to all the minutes, that's our plan, but as we approve this minutes, can we make a motion to move that to the consent agenda for the next
Yes.
Now each individual one.
Okay, so let, let me explain the process. The process that we're doing is, in the work sessions, we're gonna go through, you're gonna give me all your
Changes.
Changes for each one.
Right.
So these changes will be corrected, and it'll show up in your consent agenda, and then I will just put a little thing on, say revised at the work session, and you all just
Approve.
Approve them as, as they go.
Perfect.
And, and, and that's fine, we, we have it
Because you'll see the corrections.
We have it redlined in the thing, like what you changed, so we remember.
Do you, okay, so let me ask the, let me ask, do you want the, you want the, the red line, the, the track change ones in the
Packet.
Consent packet? Or do you want them changed?
I think that makes sense, because then if, if someone has the time to look for
Because it's my understanding
No, we're supposed to go to our changes.
That, once it goes to the consent
Right.
Those are with all the changes that you made here at the work session, but
But, but let me, let me throw a scenario out for you, okay? And this is why I want to redline it, for the consent agenda. Say, we all agree, but somehow missed something, and it didn't get in there, or you added it wrong, or something like that, then if I'm looking at it, I can easily spot out, yep, that's what we agreed to, and the red line
I'm not letting them look at the minutes, yeah.
No, that's the whole
I'm not saying we're
That's the whole point of this process.
But how do we know that the minutes were changed correctly?
Mayor, that's, that's the reason why we're doing it.
Then you knock yourself out.
The reason why we're doing it
But if it's redlined, then it's, I could
I mean, but we're literally doing it right now.
Okay, so put the red, can you go ahead and track changes now?
I've got it on
She did.
So the thing about, that's the whole point of this process, yeah. This is why we're doing it this way, so that you all see them. And then that way, when you see them at the consent
I'm not looking at these minutes again.
They'll already be revised.
Yes, okay, and I'm, fine with that, I was just pointing out that we were making the changes, I get it, we're doing up here, but as we do each individual meeting, let's just call for a, a, a motion to
Okay, we're done.
Move it to, because we may go to the next one and say, okay, well, we did your thing.
Oh, yeah, that's fair, I think that's fair.
All right, so we're good with this one?
Well, and I just realized, I'm sorry, y'all, I would, did not have the right one open. I had 12th open, not 8th. This is, is this the vice, the retreat?
February 8th.
And I wasn't there, so I didn't make any changes.
But I, you did, because you put the annual retreat.
Just more, yeah, more, more formatting, yeah.
I'm, I'm good with this.
So you need a motion to.
Hold on, anybody got any, very good?
Okay, did we have any changes?
Nope.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion to approve?
Approve, uh, approve the, uh, February 8th, 2019.
As presented?
May, as presented.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, and move it to the consent agenda for the next, for the following regular meeting.
Further discussion? I'll just say one thing, sorry.
Let me say, further discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Who's, who's gonna make the motion?
Hold on.
I have a, so you're gonna, but you, can, can we get a commitment from you, though? That if you get any other changes that are substantive, that you'll let us know?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Just wanna make sure.
How does she give out the changes?
The only one that I would get substant, uh, substantive, uh, changes would be from Christina or Chaplin.
Yeah, someone who's not here, I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, I'm good. Barbie, wanna check it out? Okay.
So is the motion on the table? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Look at that one, first one down. Alright, this one.
So let me, hold on, hold on, just one, let me save what I've got here before you, before you move on.
While you're saving, I will mention, okay, the next, uh, minutes up for discussion are 3/12, 2019 Budget Work Session and Regular Meeting.
3/12, okay.
3/12, got it.
This is the Budget Work Session.
Oh crap, where's the Budget Work Session?
I did not see.
I wasn't at this one either.
The Budget Work Session in this, I don't think, I think, I felt like there was one.
Um, it's, it would've been in front of the, um, the regular meeting.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Was it right in front, or was it back behind some of these attachments?
No, it should've been right in front.
Watch the.
3/12?
No, I did, I did not have a packet, all I have is regular reading minutes.
That's, that's right, I, I'm on the same, yeah, me too.
So, um, we still can work on the regular meetings.
Hang on.
Hold on, wait, wait one second, one second, because there's a whole bunch of.
I read it online, but I didn't see it in the packet.
I didn't see it in the packet.
And I think I did them too.
Did I not print them?
I, you know what, let me check your originals that you sent me.
They're all to be.
Because Christina even checked the packet for me.
Yeah, like I still even have your smart. I didn't, I didn't check to make sure the minutes were in there. But these are all the ori, I save your originals, and then I'll save new ones that I mark up. This one's all way back in May, and it's just 3/12, regular.
That's all of them.
That's right, 'cause I had, I listened to this on, I listened to the audio, but I didn't see them in the chapter, I did download them.
Yeah, Barbie, it just goes 3/12 regular, and then 3/18 special in the, in the meeting minutes that you nailed.
No big deal, though. It's not a big deal.
Okay, well, they're pretty, they're a little short, so I can print them right quick.
Um, if you guys wanna have them printed, we can go back here and move forward on this.
Scroll to the top, just for a sec.
You wanna do the same thing for this one?
Take out, yeah, take out council, take out budget, yep, budget.
Uh, so you want this to say?
It's just council meeting minutes, period. If you wanna put a designator at the bottom in brackets. See where it says agenda item? There's, you could put it right there, in the green, right? If you really want something.
No, I want it under, I want meeting minutes gone underneath Banks Fellowship Hall, and I want that to say Budget Work Session.
Okay. Yes, that's right, there you go. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, so you wanna roll, scroll down and do this as we're looking?
I mean, they're very short, they're very short.
So later, I'm gonna introduce a couple of the formatting things, but for these ones, I'm not gonna worry about them. 'Cause I took these in another package, so.
Well.
Although I did notice you did, changed a bunch of them, like PRNG, you could be understanding.
Yes, now, and, um, but now I can change the action, 'cause I know that was one of the things that you wanted to have motion and vote. Now that can also change, too.
No, uh, oh.
'Cause I did that on some of the others, too.
So that's gonna come up in the rules of procedure thing. It is part of our rules of procedure and/or the, what do you call it?
I can do that, I can mean.
Uh, policy, to require all voting details, who voted and how. And in fact, in talking to, um, uh, not Chaplin, what's his name?
Chaplin.
Chaplin? Did I get it right? Oh, Spencer.
Spencer's last name.
Clear, right.
I mean, there, everything is in there, it's just not set out as motion and vote, but I can, I can continue to do.
So.
So, in this case, I'm sorry, 'cause it depends, in this case, where it just says.
So I, I can change that.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's.
Alright, so here, let me just, uh, uh, hold on, so. And I have kind of a, a list of these, just separate. So it said, where it says, it says, "A motion passed with unanimous consent of council." That should be the motion passed with unanimous vote of council. 'Cause remember, we talked about last meeting, unanimous consent is different than.
But, but to add on to that, given that it's a reminder, and this is just something little, because there were two people absent. Putting a number in there is not a bad thing, so that we know who voted on it, the two council members that voted on the 2-0, uh, meeting. 'Cause I saw a lot of that, that we weren't putting the actual number, and maybe that's to your point, Mary, that you're, you're not saying unanimous, because it's. You, when I read unanimous, if I forget that, oh, so-and-so wasn't there and stuff. It was a 2-0 vote, well, why was it 2-0? Oh, that's right, so-and-so wasn't there and stuff. So you're actually adding a number for 2-0.
Okay, hang on, so Barbie, instead of consent there, do vote, because it's not consent, 'cause we actually voted.
Would you rather it be majority vote of council?
No, because it was still unanimous vote.
Just a number, 2-0 vote.
With a vote of 2 slash dash zero, I think is what Joe's trying to say.
Right.
You wanna do that instead of unanimous vote?
Yeah, because it's, it's not unanimous, because Mary didn't vote on that one.
But it was unanimous for those that were there. Right?
Yeah.
It was, but then you're, if you're looking at meetings and you missed that.
Okay, well, then there, no, I'm fine with that.
And I'm okay with a 2-0, it's fine.
Not a big deal, but it's.
It does highlight the fact that there were, that there's only, yeah.
I mean, I mean, if you really wanna get technical, then it should, it should say, you know, uh, Council of Vandenberg Dispensary, and, uh, the yes, uh, you know, just one.
Well, in that case, if that's gonna be, then all of you are gonna have to, um, do by show of hands. Because I'm not gonna know that unless I write it down, and, because I can't, I, I can't determine that on the audio.
Usually when it's not unanimous, I'll say it's 2 to 1 with 10 voting in the negative, or something like that, so I point that out.
But I need to hear the vote, not just you relaying the vote, I need to hear the vote from each member.
I'm gonna back up a little bit here, too, because this goes to, you know where it says, "Those present and those absent?" In my other notes, I really do think it should say council members present, council members absent, just to be sure who we're talking about. So there's that. And then, I'm, this is another note I've got coming up. When a council member enters a room, that's why you record the time, right? Because then you know when, why that number has changed from 2-0, or unanimous, to.
No, 'cause there was a time that they didn't, they pointed it when Robert got there, but not you. And, and one of the meeting minutes, I noticed, and so you're correct, and I was, I, that was on my notes, that why did we do it for Robert, but we didn't do it for you?
Yeah.
Well, because you didn't actually.
Recognize.
Recognized her in the meeting as she came in. So if you recognized her in the meeting, I, I'm typing, I can't, I can't see what the clock. See the clock and see the person coming in.
Should we just.
So it's up to the presiding, uh, person of the meeting to, uh, recognize the council member coming in. Let the record show that, uh, Councilwoman Scoot came in at 10:15, you know, something like that.
We'll try to help everybody remember that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Usually, I mean, I, I personally would like to see it, like noted, like if Joe was late or something, it, like.
I usually put it up in here.
Like even put a note up here.
Yeah, and I even put it here wherever they're, wherever they are.
No, I think, I think we have done that, yeah.
Yeah, I have done that, as to where, when they were, were noted, but I, I just need to have some help to, for you to recognize that.
I think it's important at the front, too. If you put it in the body, that's fine, but at the end.
Yeah, up in here, and then I usually do that here, too, sometimes.
So we're good there, so scroll up a little bit.
Okay, do, um, second paragraph there, towards the end, throw in that ampersand for PR and G board, it's the second paragraph.
Oh, right here?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, just noticed it, see where it says, on the fifth bullet, I think, PR and G and Greenway Projects? You don't have to use and Greenway, 'cause the G stands for Greenway.
Oh, right here, yeah.
Just take off and, just take off and Greenway.
Oh, yeah, and Greenway.
Not Angie, the and Greenway, yeah, there.
Yeah, just take that. Uh, can I ask you a question? Is it easier for you, Barbie, if you just say, Mrs. Alph, I, I like to use the following a lot. So Mrs. Alphen noted the following, and then just do everything that she said.
Bullet point it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine if you want the extra words, but you could just break it up and make it easier for yourself, so you don't have to repeat it over and over, just a thought.
Yeah, like at the top of the thing where it says, "Ms. Alphen presented a budget," and then.
Yeah.
You don't need.
It's just the following.
Yeah, so you're redundant putting her name in.
I mean, it's fine for now, but just to help you, Barbie, so that you're not having to do it, write her name so much. Do you know what, do you know what we're saying?
Yeah, you don't have to even do it now, we're just making suggestions.
No.
Okay, so right where you are, right, um, right there, "Ms. Alphen presented the following."
Oh.
And then just bullet point it, and so when you get into the bullet points, you don't have to say, "Ms. Alphen noted, Ms. Alphen presented, Ms. Alphen suggested." We just know that she's already done that, 'cause she was presenting the following.
The first cut, if you don't have that, then you start doing it.
So do you want me to do it there? No, no, just, no.
Just leave it.
Just for future, you know, it's, it's just easier for you.
Yeah, if you wanna highlight, like put a quick highlight on it, then you can go back if you remember, and you're on a.
Well, I'll tell you what, can I just do this? So that.
Yeah, that you'll remember, yeah.
So that I can remember.
Yeah, and you can either, and I can't see it, but with regard to the budget, and then you can just bullet point everything from that point.
Yeah.
And makes it shorter.
So right here, with regard to the budget?
Yep.
There you go. And then, and then you just, yeah.
Bullet.
Yep, bullet point everything from there. Okay.
And put a column here.
Yeah.
If that's what you want, then we should do it this way. I mean.
If we're gonna do bullets, just do it.
If you're gonna do it, yes. Let's, let's just, let's just do what you wanna do.
I mean, I mean, you, and you might look back at that and say, okay, with regard to the budget and PR and G requested Greenway Projects, right? You might amend that first sentence, but once you've established that first sentence, you can make it life easy on yourself with the.
So going down below, fourth bullet, fifth bullet, there, Miss Alphen.
Miss Alphen here?
Yeah, just take, just take, "Ms. Alphen noted that."
And then just put PR and G's proposed.
Noted the following?
No, 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 just take, take that.
We're having to get rid of Miss Alphen.
Cross out that, cross out this, cross out this.
Cross out what?
She asked, she asked, like right there.
Yep.
Anything that refers to Alphen?
No, not the one.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Yeah, give her a second, she, it's her.
Hold on, hold on just a minute.
She's looking at your screen, and we're pointing on that.
Um, so you don't point, just tell me which bullet.
So, okay, that bullet, but stop right there. Nope, stop. So just have proposed capital projects, and if they wanna explore projects.
It might be some tweaking later.
Let, let me do something.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm totally, totally not with it. This is a new process for me, too, so, okay.
So can I refer you, let's go to budget, let's start budget one, and we're gonna go to bullet point one, change nothing.
Okay.
Bullet point two, nothing. Bullet point three?
Yes.
Nothing.
Okay.
Uh, bullet point four?
Yes.
Counsel's agreement with regard.
Okay, so we're gonna take out she asked. We're gonna take out if they.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna say agreement.
Yep.
Okay.
With regard, and that's it.
Counsel's.
Oh, take out with.
Post three S on counsel.
And that's it.
And a post three S on counsel.
And she'll, well, she'll probably, I'm not gonna do all of mine.
Post three S right there.
Yeah, counsel's agreement.
We're fixing it, or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so bullet point five, are we on?
Yep, next one.
The proposed, see where it says, "The proposed," start the sentence there, and everything else delete.
Good.
Number six?
Mm-hmm.
PR and G's proposed CIP, so CPR and G, that's where you're gonna start the sentence. Delete everything before PR and G is proposed.
Noted that, you're deleting that.
There you go.
Okay, next, everything before PR and G's, take it out.
Take all that out?
No, Alphen presented, yeah.
And then, Miss Alphen suggested?
Uh, consider, so change this word to, yeah, take that out, that council consider whether.
That council consider?
Mm-hmm. And, and then that's it for that line.
Yep.
Well, consider and not consider.
Yeah.
Well, shouldn't it, shouldn't it be past tense?
No.
If it's a.
No, 'cause we're doing it currently at the time of the minutes.
She's saying suggest, yeah.
And then I would make.
And does that need to be out of there?
No.
It seems like it should. 'Cause, yeah, she's asked, she's suggesting, right?
So the next line, "Ms. Alphen noted," that should be another bullet point, and then it should just be final budget review numbers. Get rid of, "Ms. Alphen noted that."
And this should be final budget numbers?
Yeah, and that's it.
And all of those can be bullets underneath?
These, these two here?
That one, the second, sorry, the next one can be a bullet, the next Budget Work Session, that one, that can be a bullet.
Okay.
And then, "The council requested" should be an action. If the full council requested without, with unanimously, then.
Action, right.
It should say, "The council." There we go.
There you go, okay.
Do you want it to say requested or review, or do you want it to say something?
No, that's fine.
That's true.
Do you all heard of distinguished action in capital letters at the.
It's fine with me, if you wanna put the action there, that's where you would put it. 'Cause if it, as long as it's truly unanimous, yeah, you can put action on the top of that. And having been in your place before, where you're typing while in a group, I, I think we're all okay if you have to go back and review for tiny, minor things. Didn't we, we even said that, I think, last time.
Oh, that happened.
So don't feel like your typing has to be, like, perfect this time.
What happened here?
Or format.
You're on, you're in the right place.
No, it's, my track changes aren't in there. Oh, you know what, it just, I hit accept and.
Does she know how to do a compare doc? You know what, Barbie, there's an easy way to do track changes, actually, if you do a compare document, I'll show you how to do it later.
Can I hit reject, um, all changes, so it, they come back?
Sure.
Just undo, undo.
You can go backwards, yeah, I'll, I'll show you how to let, show all the changes we made today show up without having track changes on right now.
I know what happened. There we go, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, perfect, awesome.
Good.
Alright, and then this one's supposed to be motion, alright?
I have a question, question here, more for Nick. Do you like, or want it to say Mayor Pro Tem?
It should.
That's what you are, that's what he is.
I know.
I mean, I know he's a council, I, I know he's a council member.
More for your sake, I'm just saying, whether or not you, when it matters, so, okay.
So, everyone's good for that one?
Yep.
Alright, hold on, okay, so you're good, I'm good with this, so I'm gonna go ahead and save this.
Okay.
And not for this meeting, 'cause I realize he's adjourning it, but.
Alright, so.
So need a motion to approve the amended, uh, minutes for the work session on March 12, 2019, and move to the consent agenda at the next fall, at the following meeting, the next meeting.
So moved?
Oh, Kayla.
Aye.
Next up, we have, uh, Village Council.
Quite, sorry, one thing, we're, you're, are you saying motion, or are you saying action? Which one are we doing?
Well, you told me right here was action.
I was just going by what you guys put in your thing, do you?
But this was a, an, a motion, so this was an action, so.
Oh, so you're having to do what? No, no, I'm just asking if, what your thought is.
Well, you tell me, I mean. Y'all tell me what you want me to do. I mean, I can do a motion, or I can say action, whichever, but if you do a motion, don't you have to have a vote?
Then you have to vote.
Yeah, yeah, so if you do an action, there, and.
Got it.
The only thing, you know, that, so you, you made a motion, so you, you, right there, the way it stands, you're assuming everyone agreed on the motion.
I mean, I can say the council agreed by unanimous consent to review the blah, blah, blah.
No, 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 I'm saying this, right here.
Something different.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm saying right here, you made a motion, but it didn't say what we did on that, any motion should have.
Well, I can take that completely out and just say.
Well, no, I mean, because you have to have that in there, if, if the meeting was ended.
Yeah.
But then, the motion passed by unanimous consent.
Can I make it simple? A motion is also an action, it's just a different way of doing it. So I would just keep, for your, even for your sake, just keep it always action, but just make sure that when there's a vote, that it says the word vote, and it details who voted. So in this case, it would be Mayor Pro Tem made a motion to adjourn the meeting, the motion carried with unanimous vote. Or unanimously, however you wanna do it.
Or 3-0 vote, however you want.
Yeah.
If it consists of three.
Okay. Do we have a hard stuff?
No.
Where they don't choose.
I need a snack, but. I'll go with 30.
Do you need ordering pizza?
What is that? Oh, you were here.
They're pretty good.
It's good, try it.
They're pretty good.
What is it?
It's, it's. It's veal tongue jerky.
Veal tongue?
No, veal tongue.
I, I drew the line.
Give it tongue, you love it.
It's not tongue. No.
I was kidding.
I, I can't.
I was kidding.
Veal tongue, it's from, it's a special prepared jerky from, um, South Africa.
Okay.
Okay, it's really good, okay, so.
So is that what it needs to say?
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, sorry, oops, it moved a little on this.
Well, I just went up to see what I had.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to see what I put at the top.
No, don't take this, you wanna try something?
Yeah.
You, you don't want these.
To make, to adjourn the meeting, not adjourned. Meeting adjourned. To make, to adjourn the meeting, not adjourned, meaning adjourned, yeah.
The motion, sorry, the motion passed by 2-0 vote. Yep, and you didn't even have to say of the council, you just said 2-0 vote.
Yeah, just say 2-0 vote.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're good with that one?
Yep.
Alright, and we approved it, and that's, they're going on the consent agenda.
Okay, so that's been approved?
Yep.
Right, okay, so, next up, we have the bills council regular meeting, March 12th, 2019. So you have that one chold up?
Oops.
Yep.
Okay, the format looks good.
Yep, take regular meeting out and put it below.
Yep. Okay. Oh, um, on all the minutes, just the P dot M dot, PM, AM, all the way through, on all of them. See how it says March 12th, 2019, 5:30, and then it says PM with a dot, it just, it should be P dot M dot. Sorry, I, oh, I didn't realize you were doing, working on it.
Okay.
So just, Barbie, just make a note throughout, just-
Yeah, and to be honest, I have like this list of things that are just throughout, I'll mention them, and then I'll just pass it to note if you guys are okay with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, cause it's all like, stuff like that.
So, any changes?
Um, let me see if there's any substantial, okay, you want me to go through mine real fast?
Yep.
Uh, council members, FYI, next time we do this, I'm gonna show her how to put line numbers on every page, so we can say line number, whatever.
Okay.
Um, it'll be easier, so, under call to order, it says those present, change to council members present and coun, and council members absent. And you guys, I'm not gonna mention that again, it's in my list.
Perfect, so there's, yeah, so then that's good.
Okay, I can have those. Yeah, go ahead. Is she ordering food?
Well, she can, I mean, if you want to, I just wanna follow.
I'm still gonna be, but this is the worst.
I refuse.
Sorry, my fault, I, I, I'll just finish Joe, so you can go after.
That's okay.
Uh, under action, I forgot.
Under action.
Under action, adoption of the agenda. Um, the motion passed with vote, I, I said unanimous vote of the council, it sounds like everyone wants different. So with a vote of, with a 2-0 vote or whatever, with a dash vote, I'll just say that, and you can fill it in.
I think you were there then, Mary. Were you there then? Cause you got there at 6:40.
Was I?
Yeah.
You arrived at 6:40, according to here.
Oh, yeah, I was pretty close to the beginning.
And then Robert getting a rod and so, great.
The timestamp says, timestamp says 4:25, which would be 6:34, so she's not there yet.
So that's, that's fine to make, cause we have this, I have a 3:30 hour for me, cause I know-
I know that, that was only five minutes late.
We all arrived at 6:40, because remember we had to move from Banks back over here, cause they had something going on, remember?
I know, I have to do this, but you guys go ahead, I think they're hungry.
He called, he called the meeting to order over there, because we had to, and then we walked over here and started the meeting at 6:40.
Right, but the same, the timestamp says 4:20.
Yeah, but she was here at 6:40.
She arrived at 6:40, okay.
So I think Mary was here then.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay.
Remember, cause we- 4:25 timestamp, what does that mean? Is that for?
At the 4 minute 25 second on recording one.
So for the work session?
Versus the regular meeting, we, we had to move it over here, cause they had, we had a conflict.
Right.
Oh. We had to move over there.
I mean, not that it ruined, not that it ruined, I guess.
Am I hungry?
I am.
No, I don't, no, we had the meeting at 3:12 over at Banks.
Did we?
Yes, the, the one that we had to move is probably the, the next one.
The next one, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was, actually, the one we had to move back over here was, uh, was the budget one.
Is this, yeah, is this, this isn't the budget one, right?
No, that was, that's 5:15.
You know, I remember what-
Because you were not here.
Yeah, that was the night of my son's concert, I was getting him ready.
This right here was, yes.
And so I was a little bit late.